Good evening, I can call this meeting for the city of San Juan at six AM. We have a great invitation to the one.
Even the prison circumstances are not outside your sovereign frame. We place a meeting in your hands, your security, so that we can effectively affect each part of today's agenda. Just be praying Jesus' name, amen.
Back for pledge allegiance?
The village is set up now, the United States of America. The church public, which is standard, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Under public comments, Ms. Diana?
No public comments.
We don't have any signed up?
I'm sorry?
Has anyone signed up?
No.
No? Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening, staff. Tonight, we have a couple of presentations. The first one is under presentation for It's Time Texas Community Challenge for all Texans to make healthy lifestyle choices and improve physical, mental, emotional well-being. Ms. Casos?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. After an unprecedented year, we're hitting restart. As the coronavirus continues to impact our communities, staying healthy is more important than ever. Commit by joining your community in the 2021 It's Time Texas Community Challenge. Today, we have Mr. Joel Cabazos with PSJA District that will be giving a short presentation on the challenge.
Evening, Mayor, Mayor of San Juan Commissioners, citizens of San Juan. I come here as a public relations specialist for PSJA and also for my school. I'm also a San Juan resident for the past thirteen years. ITT Challenge, as Ms. Cabazos mentioned, is promoting good health, well-being, for mental as well. It's been going on for several years. And I know PSJA went into this challenge to promote these initiatives for the past three to four years. As a district, we didn't do so well the first years, but last year we got first place. And this year, we're in first place again, beating out Pasadena. And I'm seeing the mayors get into it, the residents from PSJA, as well as our neighboring cities get into it. They log in their points due to the COVID on their application. They're doing yoga, eating well, promoting all these healthy lifestyles, being fit. Especially now that it has been promoted through this pandemic, right? To take your vitamins, do exercises, et cetera. We just saw the Super Bowl on Sunday. Tom Brady's longevity, they attribute it to good health, eating well. And he's still gonna keep on going. As a nation, the sustainable development goals, seventeen of them, were promoted by the United Nations in 2015. And number three is specific, it says good health and well-being, to promote wellness for all ages. It's all ages, not just the youth, but it's everybody. So, I've seen for the citizens of San Juan, I live on the north side of San Juan, and I see some of the parks, now the walking trails. Thank all of y'all alongside, I believe I saw Mr. Cantu here. Thank you to Aridalo County. And I look at my family. My grandfather is ninety-two years old, living in Reynosa. And the last time I saw him, he was still gardening, and he was still building a house. And alongside with my grandmother, who cooks up some nice meals. They've been happily married for seventy-two years. And they attribute it to good health, well-being, eating right, and always doing something, always being productive. A couple hours ago, I got recognized for my school. I didn't mention it, I work at Buell under Mario Bracamontes, my great leader. I got awarded the Teacher of the Year, okay, for my school. Citizens of San Juan?
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you. So I'm on a happy high. I'm gonna even be more happier the cherry on top, if all of y'all sign the pledge that you dedicate, that you challenge yourself, I'm gonna do it for myself and encourage my family. I encourage all the men and women in this building to sign up and try to do our best. The deadline is February the eighth, as far as for the challenge ending. Like I told, PSJA is winning. And I've seen our neighboring cities, and I'm like, where is... This is where I've been living for the past thirteen years. And I care about my city, I care about PSJA, and I know that you all care about it. So, I challenge y'all to commit yourselves to this pledge. And hopefully, we can do it right now, and then later on with the mayor, maybe do a nice video. I'm not saying it's gonna be a TikTok, okay, none of that, okay?
Well, if I have to, I'm sure you'll worry about it.
You'll be right, okay? Thank you all for your time, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yeah, Diana took it. The paperwork?
Oh, right? It's a nine. Eh, not a nine.
It's a nine?
Are you serious? Can you live with it, twelve?
No, it is. He has a nine.
Oh, well, I can live with a nine.
Was there any picture on the twelve?
Yeah. Ah, no. No, no, yeah, you're right.
The next item, Mayor Commissioners. It'll be a presentation, management update for 2020, upcoming 2021 hurricane season, and the COVID-19 vaccine community clinic. Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon. A quick, feels good to come back, I guess, we hadn't been doing that virtual. Just a quick update on the 2020, which we all don't really wanna remember. The Hurricane Hannah. I got some numbers that were submitted, as we compiled them and submitted them to the county for our DSO, daily summary. Pre-landfall, we had a sandbag distribution on the twenty-third of July. We passed out two thousand sandbags, and then we did a... That was on a Friday, on a Saturday, we did another thousand, so it was a total of three thousand sandbags that we distributed. Of course, we replenished some of that, we still have some available should the need arise. As far as for the public assistance that was submitted to the county for debris clearance, it was a total of thirty-eight thousand seventeen and eighteen cents. Emergency proactive measures, that was in preparation for the pre-landfall, it was twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-six ninety-nine. And buildings and equipment, as far as damages, it was twenty-two, five, twenty-nine, sixty-two. That was just in the public utility system, we had a, I think David had a pretty massive damage out there for a total of fifty-two thousand five fifty. And recreational was sixteen thousand one hundred and seventy-six. These numbers, I know some might correct on yours, David? I know some of these numbers, there might be additional, but these are the ones that were submitted to my office. Which, like I said, we submitted to the county. As far as reimbursement from the county, I don't know if, I know the threshold was pretty steep. I know we submitted some of our claims to the insurance, to TML, and there's been some reimbursements, I don't know what the total is. So that's where we're at on that, and of course, personnel?
Chief, going back to the totals on that, who has them?
That goes through risk management, as far as some middle, and I met with a couple of adjusters for the damages that we had.
I was gonna say, I'm sorry, Mayor, I was gonna say that we received some... So, so we... Yeah.
Time for our next PD? If you can just kinda give us a little update in reference to that, okay?
We'll submit a report.
Yeah, exactly.
I pretty much, the numbers that I have is pretty much matching up with what, but I don't know how much we exactly got back from reimbursement.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Okay. And as far as that, as far as 2020, is when the pandemic kicked in, which was in late March, mid-March. We started purchasing masks and things like that, of course, for the employees. In July, we started hitting up the state, the state, to right now, we've got over ten thousand K95 masks for public safety. And the three-ply mask, we have another ten thousand. So, we're pretty much stocked up. We ceased requesting more because we ran out of room. We've got the conference room over there on the north side, pretty much like a fourth of it already full of safety equipment, PPE. Yeah. So, that's where we're at, as far as... Any questions? As far as the COVID, I think we, I met up with Mr. Arhona this afternoon. I think it looks like we're pretty much becoming up or selecting a date to run a clinic here in San Juan. I made contact with our EMS provider, and it's gonna be either joint with them, or another option would be the school district. It's just a matter of coordinating, which we don't have a problem, the incident action plan is pretty much already, I have it ready to go. Either we do it in our facilities as far as the drive-thru, or we utilize the school district.
Or also, you may wanna consider the getting the hold of the representatives at the diocese as well? And maybe using their parking lot?
Oh, yes, yeah. We've already did the plan, the plan that I have is, we'll be staging there. I was explaining to Mr. Arhona earlier today, I think, part of that, it all depends how many vaccinations we can secure. But the plan is to pre-stage there, the night before, pre-register.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
On the west side parking lot?
Yeah.
There's exactly five hundred and ten parking spaces there. Once we pre-screen there, we'll stay, we'll bring them, we'll usher them to the soccer field, and our soccer field, and then we'll stage them there, and then from there, we'll start flowing everything south. For the two parking lots that are there, we'll set up two tents, one on each side, and just do the drive-thru. And then, the extra open lot that's there on the south side of the park, we'll do the fifteen-minute observation there.
So, so you don't have a projected date right now, right?
It's, we'll square it up, probably, myself and Mr. Arhona have a conference call tomorrow with...
So, I mean, is it safe to say we're looking about maybe a month from now, three weeks, you know, a month and a half?
I'll shoot for a month, but it might be sooner than that.
Okay.
It's, I mean, the incident action plan is no biggie, I think it's gonna be a team effort. I pretty much told Mr. Arhona, this is something that I think we can take on, I think we can fill it. And then, of course, within thirty days, or less than thirty days, you're gonna have the same people coming back. We've got the wristbands already, good to go, color-coded, and I explained to Mr. Arhona, like...
Already prepared logistically, already?
Correct. Yes, sir, just getting, setting the date and securing it with the providers. I looked into us being, as you know, registering as a provider, kinda difficult, it's a, it's a pretty lengthy process. So, the best bet was our EMS providers.
Okay.
So I made contact with them, and it looks like it's just a matter of sitting down and coordinating, and then we'll...
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that you, yourself, Chief, and Mr. Arhona, you guys really move on this?
Yes, sir.
Because I know that the community's been asking in reference to these vaccines, you know, because obviously, you know, what's going on, it's, you know, surrounding communities are getting it done.
There's several others that have come on the paper, publicizing, you know, that they'd like to host one, it's a task.
Yeah, no, exactly. So I appreciate the work that you and Mr. Arhona and you guys coordinating. Something gonna be big for our community, so I just, you know, you guys just make sure that you're on kinda top of it?
Sure.
So that way, we can get this done as soon as possible, okay?
There's gonna be, I'm sorry, there's gonna be, reach out to the school district and also DHR, and obviously, he reached out to the Medicare, ambulance services. And these entities are wanting to come up to the, to play it and do something like this to this community. I reached out to DHR and asked, hey, what would it take to get so many vaccinations? I said, how many you need? I said, no less than a thousand. So they're looking into, once they receive one, maybe they can appropriate some to us. Along with the school district, the school district, obviously, they're not a provider, but they'll partner with the county. And they had no issues, no problems about coordinating some efforts, you know, joint effort with the PSJA school district and also with the city. And along with this other one, which is American facilities, to come over and help us out with that. One of the biggest tasks that Mr. Garcia and I were speaking about was the manpower. So we have a, I'm thinking we have more than a manpower that can actually take on different tasks. Whether it's staging, whether it's inputting, whatever the case may be, I think we have plenty of personnel that can actually come up to the plate and do a good job at doing that. It'll be something that, it'll take about maybe the next two to three weeks, hopefully, less than a month. But it's something that I think is gonna be very beneficial for everybody, for the community, for everybody. And one of the goals is to make sure that we vaccinate all of those people that would like to get vaccinated here with the employees, and obviously, the elderly people.
Correct, that was, that was one of the stipulations that I made it clear, that I'd like to get at least the first hour, maybe for all the city employees.
Correct, yeah, and I'm with you on that, and then, I guess, everyone else that follows the sixty-five and over, underlying conditions. But one thing I'd like for you guys to do as well is have some sort of meeting, or two or three meetings before we initiate this process. And also get Chief Mourinho involved as well, for the trafficking and all that.
Oh, definitely.
So that way, you know, we pretty much run a pretty smooth process?
Correct.
Okay?
Yes, sir, I think one of the, one of the main things is putting everything into place, it'll be, we'll have a mock run, maybe a day before.
Okay, good.
So we'll know that we're gonna be efficient. I think one of the main issues that I'm hearing on the news, and I'm pretty sure y'all have heard them, is the long wait. You know, we make it, I think it's better we make it to where they either stay on the vehicle, and of course, depending which facility we decide to use. But if it's us here in the city, it's gonna be a drive-thru, but you still need to get them like porta-potties and, you know, things like that. So, I think if we properly stage it and plan it out right, I think we should be good.
Let me ask you this, can we look into maybe those that are sixty-five and over somehow register through a system, where we can go to their house and get them vaccinated? Would that be a major issue, or...
I discussed it with, I discussed that with Mr. Arhona, and I told him I'd like to, and my, you know, my recommendation would be to get them to go there. And then the ones that we, we'll put it on the website, we'll try to register them one way or the other, as far as maybe going to city hall or something like that, to that effect, and then we'll go to the houses and do the bedridden. And the ones that are confined to wheelchairs and things like that. But, we, I mean, there's options that I think we can, putting all our heads together, I think we can pretty much come up with a good plan.
Yeah, that's why, that's why it's very important that, I'd like for you guys to have these meetings and...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And when that comes to that, Mayor Commissioners, we'll blast it, like you're saying, they will get IT to help us out, maybe upload some sort of a form?
Exactly.
That'll say, you know, name, date of birth, and when not, and then we'll verify, and then we can always go to their homes and...
I think that would be a great thing for sixty-five and over, you know, individuals, that if we can go out to their residence and and take care of them there, that'd be, that'd be great, you know. Obviously, we know we have a certain amount of vaccines that they're probably, you know, I know, you know, it'd be nice to do the whole city, but let's be realistic here, you know?
Correct.
Yeah, but, but if for some reason we do, are able to do this, I really think we need to stress it as far as on social media, and just really pump that out and let, inform the community.
Yeah, I mean, the calls are coming in, they get transferred to the department as far as the emergency management aspect of it, and that's been the number one question.
And I guess after, after, when you guys meet and have your own, your meetings, just if you can come back to the commission and just report of what we're going on.
Most definitely.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Yes, sir, any other questions for the...
One question, yeah, and like the mayor said, yes, we do have a lot of people there, there are bedridden here in cities of San Juan. And it's a good idea that you guys are taking something like this to make sure that we get our people to that.
Yeah, and of course, for the, we concentrated more on this, but for the twenty-twenty-one season, hurricane season, of course, y'all, starts in June.
Correct.
Basically, the same, same plan that we have, getting sanitation to clean out the drainages, the ditches and things like that. And get prepared for it a little bit early. I guess the pandemic, no telling when we'll get a green light, but other than that, other than just the safe distancing, we have plenty of PPE, so we're stocked up on that. But we'll, I'll go with Mr. Arhona, we'll set up a date.
Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, Mayor Commissioners, presentation on departmental reports. Tonight, we have Department of Planning and Zoning, Department of Parks and Recreation, San Juan Memorial Library, and the Department of Sanitation. I think every department director is here, should you have any questions with any of the reports?
So I see there's only four, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for the directors at this time?
Mayor, my ma'am?
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Escobar, on your report, under Health Department, there was twenty letters sent out, and apparently, only eight renewed their business permits? So what happens with the other twelve?
We usually hit them, come in, but it depends, because it's for the month, so we send it like a month in advance for the renewal. So it depends where they're at in that month. But they usually come in, if not...
And they, do they usually come in?
They'll come in, or we'll send out the Health Department, the Health Inspector, or the Code Enforcement Officer to come in.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Willingham? Mr. Willingham, quick question. Are we renting out the baseball fields, the facilities?
For practices, yes.
We are?
Yes.
Okay, because I had two individuals say that they've been calling in, and they tell them that they're not being rented out because of the pandemic.
Maybe they're trying to rent it for a tournament?
No.
That's...
They told me it was for practice.
No, no, we're renting them, they're, actually, they're booked pretty often. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they, you can call me, but I don't...
Come for serve?
Correct. Correct.
Get them on the weekends also?
Correct, yes.
Saturday and Sunday also?
As long as it's just a practice, no games.
No game, yeah, of course.
Yes. Yeah, we had a rental Sunday. Yeah, pretty, I mean, there are days that are available still, but...
I got the same call, I got the same call, but I know that there's other coaches, I guess they have travel leagues also, they've been calling to, do they come rent it? They've been telling them, because of the pandemic.
We've been, we've been renting since July, or June?
Okay. Who can answer me, well, I guess you on the parks? Let's say, on the other side, you know, where the football field is?
Right.
Saturday, when I came by, there was a big group of kids, I guess it was wildcat practice in there. And I just stopped just to see how they were doing, whatever, and then, I guess the man that owns those leagues came out to me and said, good morning, sir, how you doing? I said, oh, fine, I just came to see the kids, do you know me, like sports, right? He told me, no, I thought you came to tell me something for using the park. He can, no, sir, the parks are here to be used, you know, and they're kids, and they all were in the stands and all that, but I really wanna know, are they, is that places, that area is open for anybody to can use it at any time?
That's just open.
Right, that is, thank you for answering my question.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Willingham, one more question. I know you were meeting with the directors for Pony Baseball. What was the outcome of that? Are they gonna start Pony after all, or...
They did not have anything concrete yet. They were trying to poll the Valley Cities as far as who would be interested in hosting. They have not received definite, well, for the South Texas region. Up north, they're moving forward with Pony Baseball. However, down here, there was very little to no interest in anybody hosting a league starting in April. There has been talk, we do meet regularly as a Valley, and the Parks and Recreation Departments, about having our own independent leagues this year, just like a local league. There is talk about, you know, those kind now. Since our last meeting, which was several weeks ago, I know City of McAllen started opening up their parks for tournament play. They have been hosting some softball and baseball tournaments, so everybody's kind of on a different schedule now. Everybody's kind of testing the water, so to say, to see how things are going. So, we have another one coming up here next week, to see where everybody stands on that. I took it to our board, they were kinda hesitant to start anything as soon as March or April, and kinda looked at maybe doing something in May, and maybe something just locally for our kids, a local baseball and softball league. Something outdoors and, you know, local, not necessarily sending out teams to travel in the summer, just to kinda lower the risk. Yes, sir.
So, so the, will this help in the high schools?
Correct.
Like Bears or any other high school, you know how JV and freshmen don't play, they're trying to see if they can get something going on?
Correct, so, yes, so, right now, we have contacted several schools. We're about six that have committed, and we're looking to have a sub-varsity league on the weekends, that again, will be controlled by us, we won't allow fans, and, you know, we'll keep all those guidelines intact. But we do wanna do something, mainly for high schools, and then a few more surrounding schools, to keep the kids active and doing something.
Real quick, the pandemic is going on, you know, so you still need to be careful on that, good, that's good.
But real quick, do you foresee, when, you just mentioned about McAllen and the opening of tournaments, stuff like that, as far as we can start generating revenue and stuff, I know that our Pony League won't be up yet, or, you know, because we're playing it safe, and doing, and the leagues are not ready to go yet, but if there's these other traveling teams that are doing it, and they see such a nice facility, and they wanna rent it out, I mean, we're practicing on it. When do you foresee that we can start generating some monies and coming in for that?
Correct, yes. We do wanna do that. Our plan is to start with this league, and it'll run for about six weeks. And we can kind of use it as a measuring tool, to see how things go, and then come late April, early May. If all goes well, I'll make the recommendation that we open it up to tournament play, and, you know, start renting the facilities out for tournament play.
Does he need with the betting catch up back there? You're looking at it, good job.
Thank you.
I guess Patrick, also just on a note, just wanna touch... I guess Patrick also, just on a note, just want to touch up in reference to the leagues, the high school leagues, I think you also need to consider the girl softball as well.
Oh, we are.
That that has to be in the picture.
Oh, it is.
Okay.
Anything we do baseball, we'll do softball as well.
Good, great, great, I just want to make clear that up.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we'll go ahead and move on, go ahead, sir.
On the public hearings, we have a hold the public hearing for conditional use permit for the soft alcoholic beverages for on premise consumption at Micheladas and Mariscos El Primo. Located at twelve oh nine East FM four ninety-five, legally described as lot thirty. Morning Woods subdivision located at the northwest corner of FM four ninety-five, Cessna Chavez Road, is requested by Georgina Garcia de Luna.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a condition use permit, uh, this is actually for a restaurant, uh, they're gonna have on premise, uh, self alcohol. And they're also asking for late hours, uh, this is a public hearing, gives the public a chance to, you know, say any comments. Some of the conditions that we're asking for, TVC license, occupational license, fire inspection, and health permit. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission also did approve this item.
At this time, I'm gonna open this up at six thirty-one PM, six thirty-one PM, is there anyone here for or against? For or against? Any questions for Mr. Escobar, members of the commission? If not. Um, I'll close this at six thirty-one PM, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Next item, hold a public hearing for conditional use permit to a portable food concession stand at twenty twenty-third North Veterans Boulevard, legally described as a west port ten point seventy-two. Feet of the north, five thirty point forty feet of lot ten, block five, John Plaza subdivision located at the southeast corner of Sioux Road and Veterans Boulevard, is requested by Letizia and Juan Rodriguez.
So it's a condition use permit of our portable food concession stand located Sioux Road and Veterans. It's submitted by Letizia Rodriguez, we did send out the advertisement as well as a letter to the residents. It's it's pretty similar as well, they're just asking for a food concession, you know, we've passed, we've allowed these in the past. They have to just get their occupation license, fire inspection, and their health permit for that trailer. Didn't get any comments around that, but the Planning and Zoning Commission, they also did approve it as well.
And this is in the corner of. Uh, I'll go ahead and open this up at six thirty-two PM, is there anyone here for or against? For or against? Any questions for Mr. Escobar, members of the commission?
Is this one on corner on Sioux Road and Veterans?
Yes.
And he wants a trailer in there or something like that? Do we require restaurants for that?
Uh, yes.
He's gonna have portables?
They're gonna have portable portable.
Great.
Yeah.
There's other establishments, right, around town that also?
Oh, yes, and and in this, in this area, we've actually had a lot of issues with.
So there's nothing new.
A lot of people that just show up, so having one person there would be a lot better than having, you know, four or five people that, you know, just without permits, so.
Got you, okay, uh, any other questions for Mr. Escobar?
Give me.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Escobar, again, we don't have minutes on this for this for that meeting that took place regarding this item. Uh, but the vote was five to one, one again.
Yes.
What was the reason for the?
Uh, I think she, uh, she had mentioned, uh, there wasn't any any pavement, so they had issues with maybe a lot of mud in the area. Uh, but, you know, I had mentioned that a lot of these food trucks, they won't sell when it's raining, so, you know, that would that would help in that in that case, but yeah, she wanted maybe like a paving, but. Since they're renting it, they're not gonna go through that expense, you know, they thought that it was kind of unfair to make them pave.
Is there gravel in that area?
I believe there is.
I've seen that.
There's a little.
Any other questions? If not, I'll go ahead and close this at six thirty-four PM, is there a motion approved, is there a second? And second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, sir.
Next item, hold a public hearing for conditional use permit for the self alcoholic beverages for on premise consumption at Wacky Snacks at four forty-one oh one North Veterans Boulevard. Legally described as a west one thirty-two point one thirty-seven feet of the north, one twenty feet of lot five, block five, John Plaza subdivision. Located at the northwest corner of Forty First Street and Veterans Boulevard is requested by Mercedes Leal.
Mayor Commissioners, this is actually, this, uh, what they're applying for is on premise, and the reason they're applying for on premise for TVC cells, alcohol cells. Is because they want to open the drinks and put alcohol in there and make those mixed drinks kind of like some of the like Micheladas and that that they've been selling. So it's kind of a new thing that's happening, so they have to apply for the on premise, nobody's actually gonna drink there, it's just that they have to get that through TVC to sell those kind of drinks that they open up, yeah.
This time, I'm gonna go ahead and open up at six thirty-five PM, is there anyone here for or against, for or against? Any questions for a lot of members of the commission? Go ahead, sir.
Is it just a drive-through or?
It's a drive-through and then, yeah, drive-through, they have, you know, chips, nachos, things like that.
Any other questions? Not, I'll close this at six thirty-five PM, is there a motion approved, is there a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Next item, hold a public hearing for the voluntary annexation petition of the proposed metals on Ridge being five point forty-two acre tract of land. Out of lot twelve, block thirty-one, Alamo Land Insurance Company subdivision, as per map recording volume one, pages twenty-four through twenty-six, map records, Hidal County, Texas, located at the southwest corner. Of Ridge and Cessna Chavez Road is requested by Espoza Development LTD.
The property located on Cessna Chavez and Ridge Road, it's, uh, there's five point four two acres that are outside of the city, and there's twenty seven acres that are within that city, it's gonna be a residential development, so they're requesting a voluntary annexation. Uh, the city is required to have two public hearings, this is the first one, the hearing will be March ninth. Uh, we also need to have two readings of the ordinance. Um, they also have to provide a service plan, uh, we'll have to provide a service plan to the property, uh, water, sewer, police, fire, trash, brush services as well. And then we'll also send letters to the agencies once it is voluntary annexed to the appraisal district, Hidal County, the Elections Department, Texas, Texas Gas, North Alamo Water Supply Corporation. As well as the School District as well, so this is a public hearing, gives the public an opportunity to speak this time.
This time, I'm gonna open this up at six thirty-six PM. Is there anyone here for or against?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Commissioners.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, good evening, I'm Alfonso Quintanilla for Quintanilla Health and Associates Engineers from Edinburgh, I'm the project engineer, representing Mr. Cantu on this property. Uh, the entire property, which is one property, is thirty-three point ninety-three acres. And during our sumero and review with your staff, planning department, uh, it was, uh. Notified to us that this particular five point forty-two acres were outside the city limits. So obviously, I I let Mr. Cantu know, and immediately he agreed, uh, the right thing to do is to do this, which is to annex this portion that is out of the city. Into the city, that way the whole property, uh, which is a subdivision, we're gonna consider in a few minutes, you know, the whole subdivision is inside the city.
Anyone else here for or against? For or against? Any questions for, uh, Mr. Escobar? Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and close this at six thirty-eight PM. Is there a motion approved?
Approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sir.
The next item, hold a po. Next item, hold a public hearing for the voluntary annexation petition of the proposed Valley Ranch subdivision being twenty-three point seventy acre tract of land out of lot six, block twenty-seven. Alamo Land and Sugar. Alamo Land and Sugar Company subdivision, as for the map recording volume one, pages twenty-four through twenty-six, map records, Hidal County, Texas, located northwest corner of Hall Acres and Cessna Chavez Road. Is requested by OC Development LTD.
This is located on Cessna Chavez and Hall Acres, this is also voluntary petition, uh, for Valley Ranch Phase One. Uh, just like the other one, we have to have two public hearings, we'll have one today and then one on March ninth, and then we also have to have two readings as well. Uh, we also have to have a signed service plan as well, uh, from the property owner, and then once this is voluntary and voluntary annexed to the city. Uh, we'll send letters to the agencies, appraisal county elections, Texas, Texas Gas, North Alamo, at this school district as well. Um, so this is a public hearing, so if somebody has any comments, you know, they can do it this time.
Is there anyone here for or against? I'm opening this up at six thirty-nine PM, is there anyone here for or against?
Good, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, Alfonso Quintanilla, again, project engineer, this. This proved, uh, several months ago, and we are nearing the completion of it. And from the get-go, we we knew, we all, we both knew that it was outside the city, but we were making efforts to. See how we could make it happen to bring it into the city, so the next item that you're gonna consider is actually part of this process, but. We were able to, uh, to get the Drainage District to agree to to annex a portion so that it's adjacent to your current city limits. So that then we could possibly do our request. So, uh, locally, everybody cooperated, and and so we're bringing this subdivision also into the city. Thank you.
Anyone here, anyone else for or against? Questions for Mr. Escobar? If not, I'm gonna close this at six forty PM, is there a motion approved?
No.
Is there a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item, hold a public hearing for a voluntary annexation petition of the Drainage Canal being five point six eight acre tract of land out of lot four, five, and six. Block twenty-seven, Alamo Land Insurance Company subdivision, as for the map recording volume one, pages twenty-four through twenty-six, map records. Hidal County, Texas, located at the northwest corner of Hall Acres and Cessna Chavez Road, is requested by Alamo Drainage District.
But this also, this is a voluntary annexation, uh, of the Drainage Canal, this is properties east of the Valley Ranch subdivision that was previously discussed. Um, this is actually the drainage to that subdivision, so, you know, we're annexing that as well to have that within within that subdivision as well. And within the city limits, they also require to have the two public hearings, we'll have one today and then one on March ninth. Uh, we're gonna have the two readings of the ordinance, as well as the service plan signed by the property owner. Uh, before that becomes official, and then also we'll send the letters to the agencies as well. But this is not actually, you know, property that they're gonna build a home, it's just, it's just the drainage, uh, drainage, yeah.
Said, I'm gonna go ahead and open up at six forty-one PM, is there anyone here for or against? For or against? Any questions for Mr. Escobar, members of the commission?
I have a question, man.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, once the, uh, that's just the drainage ditch, right?
Yes.
And right now, who serves as that ditch?
Uh, the Hidal County Irrigation District, Drainage District.
And once you annex it, we'll be responsible for maintaining that.
And they allow us, maybe we could always use it as a, you know, a little bike trail or running trail or something like that, so. That'd be beneficial, but yeah, they maintain it, it's theirs, they own it.
Any other questions? If not, I'm gonna close this at six forty-two PM, is there a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Under discussion and possible action, we have preliminary and final plan approval of the RG Complex subdivision being a point eight nine five acre tract of land out of lot nine, block thirty-nine. Alamo Land and Sugar Company subdivision located at that southwest corner of FM four ninety-five at Hooper Avenue, is requested by Paulo Soto Junior.
There's preliminary and final plan approval RG Complex subdivision, so this is located in four ninety-five and Hooper Avenue, uh, there's a new, uh, the car life oil change, it's actually to the east of that, uh, new business. Uh, the applicant is Pablo Soto, it's a one lot neighborhood commercial, uh, district zone, city engineer, city staff did review, uh, they're gonna extend the eight inch water line. As well as a six inch sewer line to the property. They can have onsite detention, and they're also gonna drain that to the text dot system, they're gonna put an eight inch spitter when when they actually build. Uh, these are actually gonna be apartments in that in that location, so it's gonna be good, uh, they're asking for one variance, um, from a fifteen foot easement to a ten foot within the perimeter of the property. Uh, the reason they're asking for that is because, you know, the apartments and and the the way they're gonna build it, it's not enough room, so they're asking for for that, uh, variance. Along the whole perimeter of the property, from a fifteen to a ten, to ten, yeah.
I'm gonna go ahead and open just the discussion, now, ten, from fifteen to ten, is that enough room, right, for?
Yeah, the city prefers fifteen, but, you know, ten will.
You guys should still work with it as far as if you need to get in there through some lines and. Right?
Yes, sir.
Oh. Any questions for Mr. Escobar? If not, is there a motion approved, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Next item, preliminary and final plan approval of the Valley Ranch subdivision number two being a eighteen point thirty-two acre tract of land. Out of lot five, block twenty-seven, Alamo Land and Sugar Company subdivision. Located at the northwest corner of Hall Acres and Cessna Chavez Road is requested by Quintanilla Headline Associates.
Valley Ranch, uh, subdivision number two, preliminary and final plan approval. Quintanilla Headline Associates, this is a sixty-nine lot residential subdivision, uh, the city engineer, city staff did review. Uh, they're planning to, uh, extend an eight inch water line and an eight inch sewer line, um, to the property, uh, the fifteen foot easement have also been dedicated for this. Uh, they're gonna drain to the drainage ditch on the west side of the subdivision. Uh, they are asking for some variances to the park fees, uh, they're asking that, uh, they pay half the park fee and the property owner pay the. The other half, or or not actually the property owner, but the the one that's applying for the building permit for the house, so they're asking to pay half and the building. Uh, the one that requests a building permit to pay the other half. Uh, they're also asking a variance for the handicap ramps, as well as a waterline loop, uh, which is a requirement from military highway, uh, they don't add, they don't want the the waterline to be looped. And that's that's their standard, and they're also asking for a variance for the secondary exit. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission did, uh, approve those two variances for the the waterline loop and the secondary exit. And the other two for the park fees and the handicap ramps, they actually denied that.
So on the park fees, um, I know usually standard is you they they have to pay everything upfront, am I correct?
Yeah, we we've had the developers, they've always paid.
Yeah, I mean. You know, having, uh. A development like you can do's doing, and he's done in the past, I mean, I don't see it should be a problem, I think, you know, as far as. Having just paying half, right, and then the.
Well, most developers, they pay the full amount.
Yeah, exactly.
He's asking for the the half, the only issue I see is collecting, uh, the enforcement, I don't know if the the city is able to. Enforce to get that park fee, I'm I'm not too sure, that's something. Well, we've never done, we we've never done here at the at the city that I that I'm aware of, but.
Be a problem?
Yeah, I I think so, because, uh, our ordinance doesn't allow for, it doesn't have that fee in there, so if they question it, where where's this coming from? Uh, it's kind of hard to to enforce it if it's not in the ordinance with the city.
So actually, you're saying that, uh. If, let's say I buy a lot there. And I go ask for a permitted at the city to make built house. And I'm I'm gonna, of course, they're gonna sell me, and then I have to pay for park fees?
Well, it wouldn't be the property owner, it would be the the contractor, whoever's applying for the building permit, that's what they're requesting.
Contractor is supposed to pay that.
Well, that that's what they're requesting.
They're supposed to pay that, so. If I go and buy, like I said, buy a lawn and I say, well, why you charge me park fee, is that to be already with a developer?
I don't, I don't know if they'll ask that, but, you know, it's possible.
Explain to, yeah.
Let me try to give you a quick fifteen year history on park fees. Park fees was created by probably a neighbor in city, right, and they used to be like three hundred and fifty bucks. And so, and and there now, there are more, and they're great, they're, we build parks with them and stuff, but when we started doing fourplex subdivisions. Each lot was four times a park fee, and so we were getting, you know, hundred thousand dollar bills, you're gonna see a, uh, uh. On these projects, it's not as significant, but you're gonna see one where it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so what we started doing around ten years ago is, uh, I think we had a four, a fourplex subdivision in in McAllen. And we talked to them and said, hey, this is a big burden, because this is like, you write a check for this hundred thousand dollars. Why don't you help us, you know, split the burden, we pay, we as the developers, we pay half. And then when the contractor, because usually it's contractor driven now, they're usually the ones that are coming and get the permits. Have them pay for the for the other half, and it's been successful, we've done it in McAllen, we've done it in in Far. And in and in Edinburgh, this is the first, we haven't done very many fourplex subdivisions in San Juan, I think this is gonna be the second one in your city. And like I said, that one's gonna be up in in a couple of items, so I asked my engineer, I said, just ask him for the same courteous to all the subdivisions we're doing. But it's a standard, like, m- most of these contractors are building in Far, McAllen, San Juan, they already know the process, they understand it. Uh, I myself built some fourplexes in in McAllen, Cherryland, when I was paying my permits, I was paying those big park fees too. So it's just a way to kind of split the burden, at the end of the day, the city of San Juan gets the same benefit. They still get all their park fees for the fourplexes and for the.
It's it's just not upfront.
Exactly.
Yeah, which, and and that's something that I I, me personally, have no problem with, you know, here, we're, I mean, we're here to work with anybody. Uh, as far as, uh, any, you know, any development or.
And, uh, and and more so than you say, it's common thing with the contractor.
No, they're, they're, they're used to it, like I said.
They know the process.
Absolutely.
But no matter what, you're still gonna collect those fees down the road.
The city of San Juan, it's the same. I mean, they, they, they end up with the same benefit.
Yeah, but, uh, my question to you is, let's say, like I said, I buy, uh, let's say about a lot, and the city charges me for, uh, park fee. Do I have to pay it?
Absolutely.
Well, it's supposed to come from the developer.
Not that it gets approved today.
They go, can we do that? Can we, can we charge the, the buyer, uh, uh, park fee?
Typically, I, I, I haven't done the research on it. They're saying that it's done in other cities. We don't have an ordinance for that right now, so if it's approved now, you actually would have to do an ordinance to try to collect, uh, to collect those park, collect those park fees from either the developer or the actual builder requesting the permit, but right now.
It's a procedural part of putting it into place.
We, we, we don't, from what I understand, at least right now, I think that's what Robert was looking at me, but we don't, Robert, we don't have that ordinance right now. We're not able to, to, uh, pass those park fees or the half of the park fee to the, to the, uh, builder yet.
But we pass.
Or even a property owner or anything like that. What, what you're passing now is your request for a variance. You're not passing an ordinance right now to pass on those fees. Right now, what, what's before you guys right now is a variance asking to pay, uh, to, uh, ask, requesting that fifty percent of the park fee be paid at this time. But as far as charging the other fifty percent, we, our city's not set up for that at, at this juncture yet. If the city would wanna go that route, then obviously we would need to, uh, create and adopt those ordinances for the, for the council's consideration, but right now, we're, we don't have that, from what I understand.
How long does that process take?
But I, I, obviously, you take, you have your typical first and second readings and so forth, and then create the ordinances, so, uh, fast-tracking that, you're probably looking at thirty up to, up to forty-five days, and that would be the accelerated fast-track. Uh, we obviously don't need to reinvent the wheel. We can look at just some of these jurisdictions to see what they're doing at, but I would always, I would get that. I would also get with, uh, Robert to see, you know, what we have and where we can fit it in our, in our code, and see if that's what this council wants to do, but I would think forty-five days to sixty days fast-track. So what you're looking at.
So right now, today, this evening, is just the variance?
Right now, today, the variances, and I, and I, as I was hearing Robert speak, there's a, there was a variance for a waterline loop that's already been approved by the P N Z, so that's really not an issue. And there's a, uh, variance on the entrances or whatever, I guess. That also too was approved by P N Z, so that's not really an issue. So the only two variances that didn't get approved by the P N Z, from what I'm looking at here, is the park fee and the handicap, uh, ramp.
Okay, but right now, we're, we're discussing what, the, you know, the park fee.
Well, actually, you're, uh, you're actually discussing right now the park fee and the, the ramp on, on this one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was gonna say is that, well, we, we don't wanna, i- if other cities are doing it, I understand that, uh, and, uh, it's a way of, we're bringing in rooftops to our, our community, bottom line. That's what we all want, and enhances the, the city of San Juan, period. So whatever we need to do, as far as, maybe we've never done it before, we never had that type of building before, the fourplex, as, as you mentioned, but there's a time that we're gonna have to start. And, and, uh, you know, I mean, that's just the way I feel about it. We, we shouldn't put red tape on, on, on things that, that are beneficial to our city. And so, with that being said, I mean, I just like to be streamlined or, or, or get approved, whatever matter we need to do it, it's possible to, to get the development going, to get the whole, you know, the subdivision going, whichever subdivision that may be.
Okay. Uh, answering to that one, um, did you say they, you know, we improving more and to make, bring more business? That's no doubt about it. But still, you know, what about if I don't wanna pay for a park fee? Are you gonna give me the permit to make my house?
That's your choice, which.
No, no.
It's not a choice, because. Buy a home in that neighborhood?
No, because when you sell the land, when you sell the land, I go buy it, you know, I buy the land and everything. I go to the city and says I wanna build my house, and they're not gonna give me the bill, the, the permit because, because I don't have, I need to pay park fee.
Saying is that there's no hidden, God, do it.
Well, the city had, city says it, it's a city code that the developer has to pay. Simple to that.
Commissioner, or, well, how do, if, if, if I may, like I, that's why I was, thought the importance of the history was important, in that park used to exist. And, and slowly, city started putting them in, and then when you start multiplying them four times, you know, four, four park fees for, for a fourplex, and you're talking about all of a sudden have a hundred thousand dollar burden on, on the, on, on the developer, something that's not been around. It's not a street. It's not water. It's not sewer. It's park fee, so you can build your parks, and, and we're not arguing against the amount of the fee. All we're saying is give us half of the burden and give the lot owner half of the burden. They don't have to buy the lot. They can go buy somewhere else where there's no park fees or, or I don't split the park fees. They have options. They're not obligated to do anything.
And you know what, and, and commissioner, and the deal that, I mean, we've seen the work that you've done and your development, and those lots go quick, you know, and, and.
I mean, we have a subdivision. It's, it's the third one on here, same thing. It's all sold out. I mean, so you're gonna have this, the money as fast as me came for it.
Collect down the road regardless. It's just we're not collecting, we're just collecting half, and then down the road, once those lots sell, then that's where we'll collect the other half.
In, in, in three, in three neighborhoods, my burden is gonna be about two fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. And so I, I understand, that's my business, and I'm a big boy, but at the same time, you know, this is a new process. Park fees haven't been around very long. They used to be a lot less, and now they keep growing and growing, uh, and, you know, it's just a way to, to split the, to split the difference. There's also just, for, for clarity, there's one more variance, and it's with respect to, to, to ramps. There, there's, there are ramps on the sidewalks. City of San Juan is the only city that requires ramps built by the developer, which is somewhat odd, because what, what normally happens is when somebody has, because they're usually at the corners, because that's where you pick up from the street. When the person building the corner lot, was they build the sidewalk, they build a ramp. And that way it can be contiguous. It's easier to match. Uh, the city of San Juan has in their ordinance that we, the developer, just puts little ramps throughout the whole subdivision. You know, it's an eight thousand dollar expense in, in one of our subdivisions. It's, it's not, it's nothing like the park fees. It's just odd for the developer to put it. We put the sidewalks in front of our neighborhoods. That's a normal requirement. We put the ramps on the sidewalks in front of our neighborhood. That's normal. It's just, it's just a little different, and so we ask for a variance on that too. And it's the same. You'll see them on all of them.
Hey, I mean.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, just for clarification, Mr. Escobar or, or, or Mr. Cantu, as far as those park fees, we, we collect those fees, but it doesn't mean that there's gonna be a park in your neighborhood, correct?
Absolutely not.
So that money doesn't, okay, they're gonna.
You all have discretion on, on, on those monies.
Okay, and, um, if we approve this, that difference, that half, would it be included in the, in the contract with you, or how would that work?
No, when they go and pay their, when they go and pay their, their building permit and all the fees that the city charges, they pay the, the park fee.
That goes to the developer?
Right, right.
No, no, goes to you guys.
No, I'm saying, but, but half of the fee.
Goes to you all.
I, I get that, but the developer has to disclose that to the.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Are, are, is the buyer made aware that there's gonna be an additional, or no?
No, not necessarily, but the buyer's not aware of anything you guys charge, right? Because you guys have, what do you have besides permits? You have a bunch of other, uh, fees to pay. They go, they go, they can ask, just like they can ask the cost of the permit. They could say, what else is there?
So, so half of the fee is included, it's tacked on to the permit?
Yes, and they'll, and they'll line item it.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Okay, no, it's not hidden. We're not.
No, not at all. And it's not even your responsibility. It's just something that's part of this subdivision, or any of the subdivisions that get approved.
And that's why, uh, Mr. Palasus is referring to that ordinance. That's why we, we would need to include it in an ordinance that those extra park fees are gonna be paid for by the build.
That either, if you're gonna do one, if you're gonna change your, your, uh, your development, your court of ordinances regarding developments, you could either do it there and just streamline it, and say, look, developer will pay fifty percent of the fees, and, and then construction or builders are gonna pay the other fifty percent. Or you could put it in as an ordinance with the option, with the option. Right now, the problem is that you don't have the ordinance to pass, to pass the, to pass that fee to somebody else.
Is that no half?
Um, and so that could be done, uh, that could be considered. If, if the council wishes to go that way, just have to instruct, obviously, our director or city manager, we can help start drafting that, that ordinance and have something like that for the city. Uh, so that way, one, when the situation presents itself, and you want either, you either one, wanna already split it, or have the option to pass it to somebody else.
Just FYI, we've never had an issue. I mean, nobody's ever said, hey, you hid this, or call me up. I've never, ever gotten a, a question about the park fee. It's, what do I go pay? I pay permits, and everybody's on the same playing field, right? Because it's usually a contractor building a spec on. They're all on the same playing field.
Thing that I, uh, caution council right now is obviously because this variances before you, so one, you know, the option is if you want, if you wanna approve a contingent on whether or not this ordinance gets approved or drafted and approved by this council, obviously, we have to notice it and, um, we can do it like that, or the other thing too is you, you take no action at this juncture, not to delay the development, but the problem is that if there's action taken, uh, remember, there is a, a P N Z that voted to deny those, those, so the only way that this would be able to pass on the local government code is that we would have to have a supermajority vote on this in order to, uh, pass it. So we either one, we can pass it with a condition, or hold off, not take any action, and fast-track the ordinance. And then at that juncture, you already have, you have something in place. So those are two, two kinda situations that, what I don't want is, if there's action taken, then the request for variance won't be able to come back before this, before the P N Z or this council until a whole year from now.
Let me, let me, so on, on, because these, these subdivisions, we have plenty of time. Uh, and so if, if you can approve the other variances on these subdivisions and hold off on the park fees, I have no problem. It's not gonna delay me at all. But we are gonna have, um, item D. That one, uh, I went ahead and paid the park fees, and I've asked to be reimbursed the half, and so that one's already in the process. There's already construction, so every day costs me money, unfortunately, but, so that one, if there's any possible way to, if the board approves it, then, uh, you know, uh, consider the ordinance, or try to see what the other cities have done. You, you all had it in Edinburgh.
The problem is that I don't know if we're gonna be able to piecemeal the variances per, for agenda items, so we have, again, we have.
But on, on, on D, uh, essentially, I think we only have park fees on D.
Okay, so when, that's what, that's my, that's my question with Robert.
Exactly.
So I needed a clear up.
And the, and the ramps.
I needed a clear up on this item B. What are the variances that are requested for this agenda item and this agenda item only?
It's just the, the park fees and the handicap.
So, what was that?
Uh, just.
What was that, Robert?
It's just the park fees and the handicap ramp.
So they are requesting on this agenda item. So the question about.
If it's just those two, I can wait on those two.
So, on this, on, on B, like, you don't even have to take action.
So that, that would be the best, if, if this council was, uh, consider, uh, maybe adopting such ordinance, then the, the situation would probably be better to not take an action on this particular item right now, because it could.
That's a whole?
Yeah.
That's a whole?
What about the three and four? It's, that, that does, go ahead and, you can, go ahead and do that, no?
Well.
Uh, P and C.
Well, I'll tell you about that, uh, P and C accepted in three and four.
I, I, if everything kinda, the whole agenda item pauses at this round, because it hasn't been ratified by this council. It's only been ratified, half of it's been ratified by the P N Z, so we would take no action at this time. None of the variances that have been requested or been granted by P N Z would move forward, or even the ones that were denied by P N Z would move forward. It would just hold it off for about sixty days, so that way the city can consider.
Well, Mr. Palasus, could, could they approve the plat, and then he could bring that back later to, to, to approve the plat?
Yeah.
With those two variances, and then he'll bring back the park fee one later.
Pull, pull, pull those two variances. If it helps the, the sidewalks and the, and the park fee on, on B and C, I know I'm jumping ahead, but on B and C, I don't need those right now. We can come back later, okay?
Well, uh, I'll tell you where I stand at, 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 uh, I, I'll tell you where I'm standing right now. I have, I have a hard time approving something with contingency of, of an ordinance. I'd rather have an ordinance in place prior to.
That's what I'm saying, on, on B and C, yes, on B and C, we can skip those two.
Right. You know, I think we should have it, you know, I believe that we should have an ordinance in place before we approve anything. We can't, we can't put, uh,
Park before the works.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Yeah, the issue now becomes is whether or not we, if it gets.
Right.
Yeah, the best way then is, so that way they don't go back a year, is basically under B and C, just take no action under those two items.
Okay, excuse me, unless Mr. Cantu makes another decision here. So right now, what's in front of you is, uh, proposed Valley Ranch subdivision number two, correct? Which is item, uh, B, yes. Uh, I believe what we would like, unless Mr. Cantu decides otherwise here in front of me, because what we would like to do soon after this meeting is actually go to the next step, which is have a pre-construction meeting and start the construction of the subdivision, which obviously is gonna take several months, but unless you wanna hold the whole thing.
No, 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 no. I'm saying on B and C, just remove the park fees and the sidewalks, but approve everything else, because I gotta get going.
And that's what I'm asking.
I got you.
I wanted to make sure.
We go back to that as soon as possible.
Yes. I mean, the, the park fees and the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Legal, can we do that?
I, I, it's just always been on the agenda item. The way I see it here is, I've, I've never been in a situation where we kind of bifurcate and, and split variances that were approved and weren't, weren't approved, because you're basically approving the agenda item as requested or whatever.
Right, and if we approve it as presented, it's with the variances for three and four. Can he bring back one and two later on?
I'm, I could, again, I've never been in a situation where we brought them, we brought them back. We either approve those variances. It hasn't been bifurcated. That's not the way it was listed on the agenda.
Yes.
So, um, I, it's, it's, right now, it would be hard to kinda give you that legal opinion, just, again, we, we haven't done it like that before.
Well, I don't think, I don't think, uh, that we're denying it or approving it, so to speak, because we don't have a, an ordinance that can, we can govern this. So maybe if we approve, I would say if, if there's a motion that states, motion to approve with the, with, with the, uh, with the exception of, uh, item two and, two and three, or actually, no.
No, one and two. One and two.
You know, uh, based on, on the, on the ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah, I was adding, but can it be brought back?
Yes. Can we bring that back?
That, that's what I rec, I've made one, is, i- if there's a possibility where you can do it contingent, approve it contingent on the ordinance, then basically you move forward, you move the project forward.
Yes.
But as long as the developer understands that if that ordinance is not done.
Yes.
Then the developer would still be, would still be dealing, fully responsible for the handicap.
Not done either way, they're gonna be responsible for it, so it doesn't matter.
Exactly, but as long as, if you, if you approve it in that way, then that's the only way that we can do it, contingent on, contingent on the ordinance, uh, that would allow for back, uh, uh, splitting the, uh, park fee. Um, if you prove it that way. Now, as far as, now, as far as the handicap entrance, um, I know that our city requires it. On that one, if you, if you're willing to do a variance on that, it's not saying that the handicap entrances are not gonna be done. They're just not done at this juncture.
Right.
And so you can do a variance, you can approve it, giving them a variance on that, if that's what you wish to do. And then you can do the other one as far as a park fee with a contingent that the, that the, uh, or, that we can, uh, that there's an ordinance that allows us to go ahead and split that fee, uh, once it's created, and then we can, well, we can prove it that way, uh, if that's what you wanna do, but as long as the builder knows that he's still on the hook until, on the park, he's still on the hook with the park fee until the ordinance is granted and approved by this council.
Let, let me ask a question, just so I can get on the same page. Let's say that we didn't have the park fees. We still have all these other variances. Could, could there have been four variances passed and one not passed, and, and the items still would have gone through, or how would you have handled that?
Well, I've never been in a situation where we've approved some of the, well, approved some of the variants and denied the other ones. We've been there, but to hold off on a ruling on one, but yet approve the agenda item as is, uh, it wasn't brought in pieces. It's basically one agenda item for the variances that were requested and, and the variances that weren't approved by P N Z.
Publicly posted property or something like that?
Yes. No, it, it is. It's just, again, it was just, uh, on the agenda item doesn't talk about all the, all the variances that are being requested.
Can a custom motion be made? Can a custom motion be made?
That's what I said. Like I said, one, you could approve contingent, contingent on the ordinance. And then you can also approve.
Which is not binding until it gets approved.
Exactly.
Or denied.
Exactly.
But just on the park fees?
Just on the park.
Right, okay.
And then uh, if they, if they wish to, if they wish to give you a variance on the handicap, as far as the those ramps not being constructed right now.
That's your question.
That variance can be done, but remember, remember that would have to be at mena, at minimum a simple majority vote.
And that was actual, that's another question as far as the handicap ramp. Uh, at what point can we govern when a home or like mostly, most of the handicaps are in corners, right?
Correct.
And, and how, what governs us to make sure that the homeowner or the home, uh, developer, well, not the developer, but the builder makes those, those uh, those uh.
Cause they have to build the sidewalk.
Right, they have to build the sidewalk.
They have to build the sidewalk and they have to build it on the corner, right? Like an L.
Right, yeah.
And so when they build the L, they build the ramp. That's why it makes sense for them to do it.
Yeah, so but if they don't, if, if they're not, they're not forced to do it.
Absolutely. Yeah, because once they build the sidewalk, they have to leave that, that, that ramp onto the street so that people can come up on the, on the sidewalk. And it's standard.
I know you're not going to build it, but we, how, how do we govern? How do we, how do we actually say?
It's, it's right now we have it and we're, it's governed by the fact that the developer does it. But if we're going to pass that to the builder, then that too, we uh, just talked to Robert to see whether or not we can pass. We would need to do an ordinance or some, some changes to pass that responsibility of the handicap ramps.
Cause we can't, we can't force the, 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 the home builder to do it, even if they're going to do it.
He has to do it. They do it. You're the only city that has the ord, the ramp put by the developer. It doesn't make any sense. Of the lot may change and all of a sudden, they're going to tear him out.
Oh, no, no. I'm not questioning, you're, you're a force partner. I'm questioning like, what gives us the authority to govern the home builder, not the developer?
City, when they require the sidewalk, they make them put the ramp.
We just right now put that on the developer and not necessarily on the builder.
I would look at that because it doesn't work. It doesn't, it doesn't work for, for the builder. They, they're going to end up tearing them out and putting them back in.
Definitely don't tear it up, yeah.
They have to.
What I see, I, I just think that we should just, my motion would be to, to do a park contingency and approve and, and uh, you know, and I don't want to see it any, it just seems like these developers and these, these, these contractors, they know what they're doing to come to this process and, and it's not, it's so much of it, you know, are, are making amendment or change or something like that. But I think that they know what they're doing as far, and I think they're more than aware every time the subdivision or development is made, you know? You're all the experts. We're not. Okay, I mean, and so I, I, I just see no problem with, with getting this approved or changed or an ordinance. If, if, if need be, but we can't uh, sit here and, and uh, you know, red tape it and stuff like that. There's something that needs to be done with it. Let's go ahead and do it. If it's, if it's, it's beneficial to us, it's a city, you know? So that, that would be my, my take on it. I don't know if you all want to.
But that, so if there's a consideration here. So there would be, uh, if the council wants to do it, it would be a motion to approve. Uh, as requested on the, the variances, uh, contingent that the variances, uh, no, that the ordinances are are um.
Name the specific ordinance for the specific purpose.
The ordinance for the park fee and the ordinance for the handicap ramp uh, be approved uh, sometime in a future date. Uh, that could be done. We can, we can do it that way. If it, if the council wants to do a contingent, that's not a problem.
Legal, you have one year on me, but uh, no, I, I, can, can we approve like the, the chunk that's not in, in being discussed right now and then separately the other ones? Because at least that'll give you some wiggle rooms on these. But we need to know on the other ones so that we can move forward.
The other ones would be approved.
Right, okay.
Cause there's not contingents on the, there's no contingents on the other variances. So you'd be, it would be specific to only the park fee ordinance.
Right, that's, that's what I'm asking.
For the handicap ramp ordinance.
That's what I'm asking.
That's later down the road.
Yeah, we would do that later.
So I can make, so. So I'd like to make a motion to approve upon contingency, uh, uh, in which one it was.
One and two?
Two, one and two.
One and two, yes.
This is a park fee and the handicap ramp.
Correct.
Second that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item preliminary final plan approval for the Meadows on Ridge subdivision being a thirty-three point eighty-three acre tract of land out of lot twelve, block thirty-one. Alamo Land Insurance Company subdivision located the southwest corner Ridge and Cesar Chavez Road is requested by Quintanilla Heaven Associates.
The preliminary final plat approved on Ridge subdivision located on the south side of Ridge Road in Cesar Chavez. The applicant is Quintanilla Heaven Associates. It's a hundred and forty lot residential subdivision. Uh, city engineer, city staff did review. Um, they're asking for an eight inch water line to be extended and looped and also an eight inch sewer line to be extended, extended as well. Uh, they're asking for variances on the park fees, uh, the handicap ramps on the interior lots. And there's also a, a list of some variances that they're requesting on lot sizes, um, setbacks, uh, utility easements. Uh, rear setbacks, side setbacks. So there's, there's a list uh, in your packet of the, of the variances that they're asking for. Um, a subdivision similar to this was approved for variances, which is Carroll Estates, which is similar to this one on those variances. Um, one, one of the, the issues that we have here is that um, they want to propose an eight inch water line looped and eight inch sewer line, but the city uh, has a master plan for a twelve inch water line to be put in there as well as a sewer. So there's a master plan that the city's going to loop the water and the sewer through the, through the city. So if they put an eight inch, you know, that would kind of, it wouldn't go with our plan. So we're, we're hoping that they could put a twelve inch instead of the eight inch. And I know David Salinas is here. He could probably has a, a few words for that as well.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioners. Um, on that, on that eight inch water line, uh, our master plan shows for a twelve. In fact, the twelve is already, uh, that was installed there actually by a project Mr. Quintanilla did a few years ago. Uh, the twelve will continue on south to be able to provide sewer to the southern property. Alright, as it is, there is no sewer in that area. It is our C C N. So our, our, our ordinance requires that they extend the sewer to and through. And I'm, I'm requesting that it stay as a twelve inch to be able to provide sewer emerged further distance in the eight inch well. Uh, second, uh, during the, the Cesar Chavez whitening, when it gets to that area, we're replacing our existing eight inch with a twelve inch to be able to feed the tank the, that's on Ridge over by P D. Eventually that twelve inch loop will continue all the way to feed that tank. That's why I'm requesting that that twelve inch be installed now instead of the eight inch. So we don't have to come back and upgrade it later on. So, uh, and as you recall, we already did the work coming south of the expressway. We crossed it with a, with a sixteen inch on the expressway. Continued along the twelve uh, from Ridge, from the expressway to Carroll and a little bit further south to Carroll. Now the additional easements and rightaways will have to be acquired now that Cesar Chavez will be expanded to be able to continue to lay that twelve further south to finish that twelve loop, twelve inch loop around the city to feed that south tank. So that's why I'm requesting that it stays at twelve.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I may address the council?
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, I would like to just touch on those two items, uh, to kind of round that up and then we can go back to the setbacks and those kind of things. But um, so what we are saying on the water line is typically we, and in the ordinance, it requires the eight inch line. If there's going to be something bigger needed or require what we ask is for the city to join and, and assist the developer in a joint effort to then do the bigger line. Uh, which also kind of like a state uh, law requirement, uh, on oversizing of lines. Because our need for our development is eight inch, which we are complying with. Sewer line, we actually, there's an existing sanitary sewer line on Ridge Road, which is actually was extended in previous year by Mr. Cantu. And we are connecting to that line to serve as the subdivision. Uh, there's nothing that tells us, eh, you know, and actually what happens on Cesar Chavez, you have a sewer line, but it's a, it's a pressure forced main line. That uh, that was built, you know, by a city project a long time ago because the lift station is further north. Uh, so unfortunately you have a line, but we cannot put a gravity line into a pressure line. But that's just the facts. But the fact remain, we are proposing gravity lines as required to, to fit our proposal division and connect to the existing line on, on Ridge Road as far as those two items. And obviously Mr. Cantu through the proposal division, he is dedicated and donated the additional waterway on both roads as required. And we don't have any problems with that. And I know we discussed a length, the, the request on the park fee and the, and the handicap ramp inside the subdivision, not outside on Ridge and Cesar, which those are proposed to be done. But the other items that we, uh, that we also included is some of the setbacks. Um, and the lot front is because um, like the west part of the subdivision is going to be for multifamily. And just like Mr. Escobar mentioned, uh, this is just pretty much the same as the one we are now seeing the units being built on, on Carroll Road. But it does, if we want to go one by one, we can do that. But it's, it's pretty much has to do with setbacks and lot areas and the utility easements.
So it's the same basically?
It is the same as the previous one. Yeah. Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
David, so you said if, uh, for a twelve inch, that's uh, what the city has recommended and he wants to bring it down to an eight inch. Uh, is it that twelve inch for further future developments or?
Yes, sir. And it's to meet the, remember the master plan was put together back in two thousand and ten. Maybe about five percent of that master plan has been put into place. This is one of the issues. Now, this is the first time that I've heard that they're willing to propose that the city pay for the upgrade. I've always heard a variance of not to put the twelve inch. That's also an option for the, for, for them to pay for the eight inch in the city. Uh, participate in upgrading it to a twelve inch. Now, we do, in ordinance, we do allow for a reimbursement agreement uh, to be put together between the city and the developer. So as other development ties into that section of the line, they would get reimbursed for the portion of the line that the other redevelopment would do. But either one of those would work as well. I mean, for, if a commi, if a commission is willing for their, for us to pay the difference in cost to upgrade it to a twelve, since he, and he is correct. Uh, ordinance calls for a minimum eight inch line.
Well, yeah, that's what I was going to say. I mean, since if the ordinance calls for an eight inch.
But it's a minimum because it, it's a minimum. That's a minimum because we may require a higher line and we do. We require a twelve, yeah.
Right?
Correct. The minimum line is a native. According to the minimum line inches, because we may require a twelve. That's why it says minimum. They can't come in and put a six inch.
No, I get that, but, but here.
But, but yes. But right now, the plan that we have in place, that was put in place back in two thousand and ten, requires that that be a twelve. That's why I have to go with the plan. Now, their needs only require an inch. That is totally true. I'm, I'm not challenging that. What I'm saying is that I have to go by what our plan says and that's what the twelve inch. But they did, he just mentioned right now that, that the city partner up with them and we pay for the difference in the upsizing of the line. They'll pay for what the eight inch is going to cost and we'll pay for what the difference in the, in the twelve inch is going to cost. That includes.
Estimate on that?
Yeah, I was going to.
I, I haven't done it. I don't know, Mr.
No, I mean, I don't have it at this moment, but, uh, but I can certainly do it and bring it before him and then come before you.
Additional material which.
An idea?
Ballpark figure, sir.
I will do that. I will do that. Um. Let's say forty thousand dollars. Yeah, ballpark.
And the reason why? Because you're going to have to go deeper and of course the material is going to be more expensive. The valves, the fittings are going to be more expensive because it's a much larger size.
Remember, I, I don't want to go back and try to reconstruct something that's already been built and something we're going to have to be upgraded. You know, the question is, is, uh, is it just a ballpark and not a figure? I'd like to have a figure in front.
Let me, let me, if I could, Commissioner, yes. Yes. Typically what we do once we get approvals with you, the city commission, then my next step, as I mentioned, is go get the bids, like you do on a city job, right? You, you get the bids from the contractors and you, you know, you review them and you know, go through the most responsive, lowest bidder and all of that. So obviously I will need to do that. Once I do that, Commissioner, then certainly, uh, we can come back with real, real numbers. I think right now is like, you know, the, the idea or the plan, and then I can bid it both ways so that we can see the differences.
Well, I think that would be much better because I mean, let's say with, let's say, you know, we're in a range of forty to fifty thousand. And then it's going to help us with a twelve inch line to get further future development. I mean, I don't know.
Uh, I know Mr. Cantu is waiting on that. Whatever we can do to work together to a, achieve bigger plans, I mean, that's what we're here for.
Question to chief, um, you don't have a problem with an eight, eight inch anyway for your trucks or anything like that, right? Okay.
Very nice.
Nice.
Very nice.
You know what the uh, uh, P N Z did on this, on this item?
Uh, they didn't, they denied it.
Denied everything or denied what?
They denied everything.
What reasons?
They, they just saw too many variances and they're like, you know.
They denied all the variances?
Yeah, they denied everything.
Well, yeah, because we have to have the, the park fees and the and the handicap eighty-eight.
Yeah, well, I explained that Carroll Estates was a subdivision that was previously brought in. And all those variances were approved like for setbacks and, and the size of the lots. All that was, was a previously approved. They were just asking for uh, a new, new stuff like the part, the park fee.
Yeah, we were not there, uh, but uh.
W- one of, one of the things is y- y'all's fourplex, um, ordinance, it calls for like a half acre lot to do it to a fourplex, which is way different than anybody else. So when we did Carroll, we had to have all these variances because the ordinance is a little difficult to work with. And because usually uh, in, 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 in uh, multifamily lots are pretty big, right? But they're like ten thousand square feet. Not half an acre, twenty-one thousand seven hundred fifty square feet. So that's why there's so many variances. But we, we got the same variances in Carroll and Carroll is going to be, you know, beautiful. It's going to be like all the subdivision we've done in Farin, McAllen.
Yeah, he's right about that because uh, his apartments, he made individual lots instead of a large, you know, like a college apartment where there's a bunch of. So that's why.
Yeah, the ordinance, the way y'all's ordinance written is almost set up for apartment complexes, not for fourplexes. That's what makes it really difficult and requires us to have so many variances.
Which one, the other one then? See, well, well, in, in one and two, you can continuously if you want, but you know, on the other one. Mr. Escobar, uh, we have done before, you know, how we have to have six feet away from each other houses. But we have done, gone down for five.
Yes.
Right?
Variations, I know some of them have been done, right?
Yes.
We have some of these.
And I guess that's what I'm looking at. Right now, have you looked at all the variances, Mark? All of them are dual because they've been done, but the ones that are questioned are the same ones.
It's because the city only has one, one zone for residential.
You were asking that?
Yeah, because on the front and the back, we're only losing five. I mean, we've done that before.
Right.
And we've done the one foot in between the houses, which is five. Ready for motion? I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
And second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
For the record, is that the approving one and two as well?
Is that still with the contingents on the?
No, it's still with the contingent, right?
Of the uh.
Cause this two has a park fee and that's how the uh,
Correct, correct.
The uh, and has the uh, handicap.
Correct, those two things.
So is there an amendment to the motion?
I will amend the motion, yes. And redo it to include the contingency for one, so those two items.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
The next item is consideration in action on the variance requested Carroll State subdivision being a twenty-five acre tract of land out of lot eleven, lot thirty-five, Alamo Land and Sugar Company subdivision, located approximately a quarter of a mile east from Stewart Road along the south side of Carroll Road is requested by Quintanilla Heritage Associates.
This also, this was a subdivision that was previously approved. It was approved on November ninth, November seventh, twenty nineteen, and November twelfth, twenty nineteen. So they're they're coming for variance for the park fees and the no handicap ramps on Carroll State subdivision. So this is this is a plat that was previously approved. They actually already did the construction and they're actually already building some homes in that area. So I was just asking for those those two variants.
Parks, the parks fees and?
The park fee and the no handicap ramp.
Actually, it pretty much is close.
Oh, the the refund.
Half of the park fees.
The refund, okay. The refund, they paid a hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred, and they're requesting half for the park, the park fee.
How much?
A half, which is fifty-six thousand fifty. They paid a hundred and twelve thousand and one hundred dollars.
Pay you fifty-six thousand back?
Well, not the city, it's gonna be the builder.
Oh, wow.
Well, you're you're right. The city would pay back, the city has put it in a fund, the city would reimburse, but then the builders, as they construct, will will pay the city.
Will be paying.
Will make you whole.
That'll happen. Going back to the first one, that's the park fee.
Of course, obviously, it's gonna also.
Also contingent, yes, sir.
Also on this one, and P and T also denied this one?
Yes.
Based on this with those contingencies, make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Can I make a a comment related to this? You know, we've been building subdivisions here in San Juan, you know, Long Ridge Road, now we're on Hall Acres, we're in Carroll. We've been here for fifteen years and we've had a tremendous, we've been tremendously successful. We believe we have a great product. You know, for every five subdivisions we do, you have somebody else maybe doing one. We've been here since the beginning. Right now, because of everything that you're doing in the city of San Juan, our subdivisions are selling like crazy. And that's not, you know, just because San Juan's great, it's because what you guys are doing, you're making it a place where people want to come and live. And so we're, you see us back and forth because we, as soon as we put one down, it sells out because people want to be here. And and I'm not saying that they didn't want to be here ten, fifteen years ago, but more and more people, I mean, the supply, the demand is crazy for the supply. And so that's a tribute to all of you. But I just, you know, like to remind you that we've been here forever doing this, you know, and there's new people, they come and they go. But we've been here fifteen years and we'll be here for many more years, I hope. So I appreciate you all's time and I know that we ask for a lot, but it's, we're not necessarily asking for a discount for anything that we're doing. We just want to be fair with you all, fair with us, and us fair with you all.
That's, and we appreciate your 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 product, your development, you know, not only here in San Juan, but I know you do a lot of work in the PSJ area, McAllen, and it speaks for itself, you know. So as a commission here in the city, we're here to help you out and as well as any other developer that wants to come into the city. And you're absolutely right, Commissioner. I mean, I think things have changed in a very positive way in our community. Your 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 houses, houses are being sold like crazy because they see the progress that's happened. And and I'm excited. I I get excited when I see rooftops, apartments. I mean, that that tells us a lot, you know, and not only that, we're all benefiting from this. So as I can speak, you know, as a mayor and and I can honestly speak for these gentlemen here as well, we're here to help in any which way we can and for for the betterment of not only San Juan, but PSJ. And I thank you so much for
Thank you all for the.
For being here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, consideration in action on the variance request for Valley Ranch subdivision being a twenty-three point seventy acre tract of land out of lot six, block twenty-seven, Alamo Land and Sugar Company subdivision located approximately a quarter of a mile west of Cesar's Road along the north side of Hall Acres Road is requested by Quintanilla Heritage Associates.
Again, this this is a variance request for Valley Ranch subdivision. This subdivision was previously approved. It was approved on February sixth, twenty twenty, and February eleventh, twenty twenty with by the city commission. They're asking for two variances, the park fees and no handicap ramps within the internal streets of the subdivision. This is similar to the the previous one for Valley Ranch.
Same thing?
Yes.
And that's a contingency. I'd like to make a motion to approve with the contingent.
I'll go ahead and second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Next item, discussing personal action to approve.
Thank you. Thank you.
To approve the wholesale wastewater treatment in a rope will agree by buying between the cities San Juan and North Alamo Water Supply Corporation, not authorized by Mayor to execute a related documents, all related documents.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This agreement currently exists already. Fortunately, during the pandemic, we kind of let it pass. That was on me because they sent it to me and just overlooked it because of the pandemic. So right now, it's expired. So I'm bringing it to you to renew it, effective January first of this year, and requesting that include a vote to retroactively extend last agreement for one year.
Questions for Mr. Salinas?
Go ahead, sir. I was a exhibit, Mr. Salinas.
Yes.
And is is does this, if I'm reading it correctly, is showing an increase?
Yes, it's going from seventy-three percent to seventy-five percent. But it's still based on the fact that they're, in the city of San Juan, we charge you, we use a hundred gallons of water, we charge you for a hundred gallons of water. That's just an example, of course, we build at a thousand gallons. But if you use a hundred gallons of water, we charge you for a hundred gallons of sewer. In this agreement, the way it's been been played, is if they use a hundred gallons of water, we only charge you for eighty-five, a sewer. So to offset some of that cost, the seventy-five percent increase. So there is a, there is a small increase to offset the loss that we have at the eighty-five percent for sewer charges. Because it is for sewer and not for water. So we're not getting additional revenue off of water, which we're getting, they build at a hundred percent, but sewer, they're building eighty-five percent, and we charge at a hundred percent for sewer. So if you use one, we charge you for one on the sewer as well. So it's a hundred, hundred regardless.
They're gonna stay at a hundred.
I'm sorry?
They're still sticking a hundred, right? One for one, but you're you're actually increasing one, but decreasing the other, that's what you're saying?
But we're only increasing it by by two percent. So we're not making up that loss in the eighty-five percent that they're not charging. And that and that fifteen percent they're not charging for sewer, we charge that additional fifteen percent to the citizens of San Juan. So I'm trying to get that equal to whatever fees we charge our citizens, our customers, that they be charging them as well, so it'll be an equal playing field. So, but I didn't want to do it all in one shot because it'll be too much of an increase to those citizens, because they're still our citizens, just unfortunately, they're customers of North Alamo. And North Alamo charges at a hundred percent gallon, whatever you use water, they charge a hundred percent, but sewer, they give you an eighty-five percent discount.
On an average bill, how much would the increase be?
Be about fifteen cents. Because it's not much. And their bill, their rates are a whole lot smaller than ours.
The way I read it here is a dollar fifty-two or?
Yeah, that's our, that's our rate. Now, their rates are a whole lot cheaper than ours.
Oh, this is, this is the city's rate?
Yeah, that's our rate, yeah.
So you don't have their rates?
No, I don't have their rate.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're not using their rates in the equation, we're using our rates in the equation. Yeah. Yes. Correct.
So our rates here on two thousand nine.
Correct.
And now it's going to a dollar ninety?
That's for water.
Oh, this is for the water on the model.
Yeah, it it depends on how much you use on average. Our our people use, they charge about a hundred and fifty-two because our average consumption rate in the city of San Juan is less than ten thousand gallons for somehow they use more, somehow they use that. But the average consumption rate for each water bill in the city of San Juan is less than ten thousand gallons. Commercial uses a lot more in some areas and multifamily and stuff like that, but they have a different rate. And this is only for residential, there is no commercial in that area or multifamily.
Any other questions? Is there a motion approved?
Move.
They move?
Don't move.
Is there a second? Is there a second? The motion dies. I think we're just gonna go ahead and just kind of revise this again.
Okay, no problem.
And really dissect it because I'm not, I'm not too much of a a big fan for for kind of increasing, you know. But if if, you know, really just iron it out, Mr. Salinas?
May I, I just need a little bit more clarification exactly where we're at.
No, exactly, that's what I'm saying, just make sure you.
I'll I'll bring you a comparison of what the citizens and the citizens don't want to pay in and what they would be renting.
Make sure you dissect the the issue a little bit more, okay?
No problem, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Next item on the resolution, we have considered a further resolution by the city commission of the cities of San Juan, Texas issuing order and notice of city election, May the first, twenty twenty-one, for mayor place one, commissioner place two, and commissioner place three pursuant to chapter forty-one, Texas election code.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Before you, you have the resolution for the general election for the city of San Juan for Saturday, May first, twenty twenty-one, for the purpose of electing city mayor, place one, commissioner place two, and commissioner place three, to hold office for a period of four years. Discussion of dates and designation of holding places for early voting and election day.
So these early vote times and dates are pretty much what the Secretary of State is?
Yes, so the Secretary of State designates the early voting dates, the range from April nineteenth through April twenty-seventh. And then, of course, the election day is a mandated date along with the time.
So now, so that's pretty much standard, having two days of early vote from seven to seven, right?
Yes, we have to have two twelve-hour days. Yes.
Okay. All righty, any any questions for Ms. Diana?
May I?
Go ahead, sir.
And Ms. Diana, who's running the election, the city or the county?
We still haven't clarified that because we're still waiting on quotes.
Okay.
Hidalgo County, I reached out to them and they are not going to give us their quotes until next week because they're waiting for everybody to submit the application. The deadline is for the twelfth, which is on Friday. Once we have that, they want the names and everything for the for the drawing. So they're waiting on that to give us the quote. So we we're not really specifying as to what, who's gonna run the election for us. We will be bringing that back to the commissions once we have that information.
But this ordinance reads that the ESS Ivotronic Voting System will be used. How do we get that if we haven't approved it?
What happened is that I'm using the same order and notice from the previous election that we had, and that's who we used, ESS. But really, today, we're only issuing the order for the election to be May first, twenty twenty-one.
Dates and locations?
Yes. Correct, and polling locations, yes.
And then you're gonna come back later in the future?
Yes. Yes, so so for the next meeting, we should be coming back with the quote that we receive. I requested from ESS and S, Hidalgo County, who already told me they can't give us their quote until next week. ESS and S, I already have. And Hart Inter-Civic is the the next one that we would get, but unfortunately, Hart is not going to give out any quotes because they're not no longer leasing equipment they want for the cities to purchase.
Any other questions?
So, Ligo, do we do we remove that, the utilization of the ESS in the approval, since we haven't received quotes? Or how would, how would we?
I I probably, you could, you could say, approve it subject to, subject to the proposal, to the proposals that are going to be received in the future. But you could approve it without that because right now, that's not before the board right now, that they're the ones that are gonna conduct the election yet.
The motion is just for the time and date right now?
For the time and date, yeah.
Right now, okay.
No, 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 and location.
It's a time, date, location, yeah.
Of course, of course, of course.
Is that your motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion again.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
The next item is considered adoption of resolution establishing the budget for fiscal year thirty-four, twenty twenty-one of the Hidalgo County Urban County Program.
Mayor Commissioners, for the Urban County funds for year thirty-four, twenty twenty-one, we have three hundred and one thousand and sixty dollars available. The break, there's a breakdown in your packet, which is general administration, three thousand, street improvements, two hundred and eighty-one thousand and sixty dollars, Amigos del Valle, five thousand, Rosca Clínica del Valle, seven thousand, and then Capable Kids Foundation, three thousand, and then Casa Hidalgo, two thousand, which that brings that to that number of three hundred and one thousand and sixty. For the for the street improvements, we added a street, the streets are Alfredo Street, Jaime Street, North Standard Street, and West Twelfth Street. The West Twelfth Street on phase three, our last project for the street improvements, that was a section that was missing, so we added that. And I did get with the city manager that that would bring it to about three hundred and thirty thousand and nine fifty-six. So what the city is proposing is, for the next budget, we'll add that money to offset that cost. Since we don't have enough, we can use the city's funds to pay for that. But for now, we're just, this is a budget for Urban County that we're that we're gonna submit so that we can secure the fund for next year.
Questions for Mr. Escobar?
May I, ma'am?
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Escobar, I mean, I'm looking at the at the project sheet that you you included in there, which is good.
Okay.
The only thing that that I would, I would like to see in the future is how many people are actually getting served by these funds that we're providing?
Okay.
Because they're not included in here, some of them don't include it. And and that would help me justify giving somebody seven over three, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
If I'm giving somebody seven thousand and they're only serving fifty of our residents and the other ones getting two thousand and serving a hundred, you know, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't justify.
Okay.
So if if we can include the numbers of actual participants that are being served.
Okay, we can do that. Yeah.
Want to table this action?
No, 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 we're gonna prove it.
We have, it's due February seventeenth, so the final workflow.
With that being said.
Well, Mayor, like if you wanted to make some changes, you can make changes and then we'll get some.
No, 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 I get you, okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
The next item is under consent agenda. Tonight, we have A, B, C, D, E, and F. Or you can pull any any of these items out, should you like to discuss them further.
And just so the council knows, I did address item B from the last time that we had a meeting. I know there was an issue brought forward to explain what's considered a sign for the count as far as in favor of a candidate or issue. So on on this ordinance for D subsection B, I went ahead and put a definition there. It basically states in general, just for the purpose of calculating the number of standalone or state signs as provided in the paragraph two A of the section, each sign is in favor of, each sign that is in favor of a political candidate or issue, because obviously, they could be a referendum or whatever, will count as one sign for that political candidate or issue. So so long as there's the candidate in that sign or the issue in that sign, that counts as, that will, that would be part of the count. So we went ahead and addressed that already.
So is there anything else that we need to modify or amend under consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item on the execution, the San Juan City Commission will convene execution. Item on the executive session, the San Juan City Commission will convene executive session in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Sec Verden's Texas Statutes and Codes annotated, Government's Code Chapter five five one point oh seven one, pursuant to section five five one point oh seven one, consultation with attorney, discussion of possible action regarding potential litigation matters.
With that being said, is there a motion to go into executive session? Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will be in executive session at seven fifty PM. Thank you. We're back from executive session at eight thirty PM. Is there a motion?
Remove.
Is there a second? I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Under executive session, at this time, we're taking no action. I repeat, no action for the record under executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Remove.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting has been adjourned at eight thirty-one PM. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Take care, boss.